So he realizes.
That was. Someone from the.
Yes, I didn't work at a concert. Someone tells me you know what they did.
Don't you know that?
You can't find us.
City's can't find the state for cutting their weeds down. I'm gonna have my attorney, he will call you. Okay, I'm coming.
Yeah, go ahead.
And didn't hear anything yet.
There, there's a simpler answer. Cut down the weeds. I mean, we, we can avoid all kinds of things.
I just went down to the bird to grab. And those thistles in that corner are like you said, they're over six feet tall. And then, and once they grow, they spread like wild.
This isn't a weed you just pull out of the grass. No. Love the float.
I read a foreword once and a horse year before that.
I will harass.
Only because I refused to get on the specific trailer. Yeah, I wasn't good at it.
But I will say that once you hit, once you go past Antelope, you need to throw it a lot farther, your arm gets tired a lot faster.
You just gotta like practice ahead of time.
I know, you gotta start warming up because when, when you have to double, uh doubles the distance, you have to put candy without. Ranging everyone.
I know. He wore a Venus and Butthead shirt when he. And I think it was awesome.
Do you have a Venus and Butthead shirt?
You can match it now, but I have time. We go shopping tomorrow.
I love that. Great answer.
Two day shipping.
Very funny.
Who was this that was you? This is Star Wars. Last year, was that we were talking about last year of Star Wars?
Wait, we're all wearing Star Wars this year?
I'll wear it.
I'm good with that.
I'm being Power Ranger.
Okay. We're gonna call this meeting to order.
Actually, the green.
Sorry.
The first item on our agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to share with us anything. They'd like to talk about, about either an agenda item or something else. Um, again, this is. Uh, the public opportunity, because these items are not public discussion tonight. Um, is there anyone here that would like to make a comment? Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Mike Kildare. This is Amanda. We are on C three. And we just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Mayor and to the council members for inviting us and allowing us to be on the agenda tonight. And hope you have a good chance to see or have read or will read our proposals and to say thank you for taking the time for us to.
You bet. And go now. Okay, alright. I will close public comment and we will start with item, our planning items, item C. C one is recommendation from planning commission proposed amendments to sections ten dot eighty-two dot thirty and ten thirty dot twenty. Uh, of the Syracuse Municipal Code pertaining to accessory dwelling units. Uh, this item came forward, we talked about it, sent it to planning commission, complaint commission talked about it. They had a couple of other thoughts that we had not, uh, brought. I'll let Noah report on those and, um. It's question if we want to take any action on this.
Yes, planning commission discussed it. They added their own recommendation concerning parking. So right now, um. If you have two or more bedrooms, uh. You could actually count one of your on-street parking. And so they were concerned about winter park, the winter season that you can't even park on the street. So they want to take that away. Also, we discovered that, uh. State law prohibits us from requiring more, more than one parking stall. Or like a basement apartment, say a basement apartment has two bedrooms, our ordinance would say you have to have two stalls. But if it's basement apartment, I think the max we can require is one stall. So we, we fix that. Yeah, the state's trying to make, yeah, the state's trying to make basement apartments really easy or affordable house.
Which I have no issue with, but I, we may have an issue with our winter parking issue, because people are just using all the street. We won't be able to plow streets.
So every, every accessory dwelling unit has to have their own independent parking stall. And they just wanted to make sure that that was not intertwined. You don't have to do the morning shuffle with tandem parking, somebody, they just want to make sure that it was. Totally independent, and I guess the. That was their main point. And then they were fine with increasing the minimum. Square footage of the law up to six thousand to match what the state law allows. They didn't have any concern with that.
So counsel, uh, what are your thoughts on the recommendations or any of your own that you would like to bring forward?
So I, I support their parking. I have a neighbor that this. I can see it happening. All the things that they just closed in and did and the amount of vehicles that they have in little trailers and I'm seeing it happening as they're doing it and I know. That's gonna be a problem, so. It's unfortunate the state won't allow us to have two because.
We can require, if it's a detached, so like a tiny house in the backyard, we can require more than one stall. It's just the basement ones. They're trying to make it super easy. I'm put.
Yeah, that's good that the back ones are okay. Yeah, I agree with those. They, I think that we're minimizing it a little bit, especially how many people are living in houses right now that when they start putting these. Att- attached or unattached dwellings there, it, oh, man. What a huge thing we have.
Anyone else?
As I was reading through it. So help me understand, so as soon as it goes to two bedrooms. Um, we are asking for two parking stalls. Uh, my only problem there is usually if there's two bedrooms, again, if it's a. If it's a child's bedroom, they don't need a parking sto- parking spot for that bedroom.
The state said we can't do that, right?
In a basement, yeah.
In a basement, but.
But if it's an attached or a, or a, you know, backyard thing and they have two bedrooms, they would be required to have two stalls. That's because usually there's some, a mom and a dad or a two people, roommates, whatever. Usually there's, there's, uh, two vehicles of these.
I would encourage us to think not of when it doesn't apply, just because there's no. Requirement that they use both parking stalls.
Yeah.
The, the requirement on our end would just be that it's safe to rent to two adults if there are two bedrooms. Because they would both be able to park a vehicle. The difficulty comes when we have a conflict with. There's not enough parking at the dwelling and, uh, winter parking restrictions don't allow you to park on the street.
But those two can be tandem.
Yes.
Yeah, if they're in the same household, they can coordinate that. We just don't want to have to go to the principal household.
Yeah, that, that I'm good.
Yeah, I don't know. This house is kind of on curve too. It's, they call that curved fifth corner. So let's see how this rolls in winter.
Okay, no, I'm good with this. I think it looks good.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll move this forward to the next agenda. The next item, we are going to review. The city land rental and lease policies. Noah.
Yes, hopefully we've had a chance to read the report. There's a lot of detail in there. The city does rent out our properties for a variety of reasons, you know. There's, there's reserve, you know, the standard park. Park pavilion reservations, things like that. But we also go kind of maybe a little bit beyond what we've found other cities do. We. We have, um, rented out our park parking lot for mobile vendors for a few distances. Uh, we have under the boardwalk at Bluff Ridge Park and they. They pay a, a fee and it's in the fee schedule. Uh, we also have a policy that says that if we are. We are, uh, renting or leasing city land that we have to have a public hearing. And so, and it, but it doesn't really go into who is the deciding. Body for, for each scenario. So when you're renting out parkland. And following the. The, uh, fee and the fee schedule, it's assumed that it's the park director. And when, when we get a request like that, it's normally the Parks and Rec director that says, yeah, that's not gonna be a problem with our. Recreation leagues or our operations. And then they work with our business licensing professional and then we have a rental agreement and. And to make sure that they're all cultured that way. But when it's a city-owned property that's not. A parked property, which kind of far and few between and in this next petition or proposal that we have. It's not entirely clear whether or not it's a park property or a. City-owned non-part property or museum property or where that boundary is. I don't know if we've necessarily defined that. And so if we're, if we're renting out city property, that's required to, to go to a public hearing. And that the amount and the fee is not exactly set, it's probably more negotiable. And then that's, I think it's pretty clear that the city council will be the deciding. Body on that one. And so. Uh, I guess the, the, it's a good policy discussion to have at, at the council level to decide. One, do we want to keep renting these out to mobile businesses? Because there are impacts. It does compete with our city. Recreation, parking. They use our restrooms, they fill up our garbage cans, they ice space. And sometimes, uh, you know. Business is often on private property, private, for-profit business on private property and public. Things on public property. So, and, and honestly, sometimes staff is not experienced in being a landlord and dealing with those sorts of issues. And so sometimes the, the effort that is required to properly manage these things. Is not worth the fee that we're getting. And go ahead.
I have a question. Which one manages the one that's already been in the museum?
There was one last year.
It's the I C place?
There was one last year. I don't think there is this year. But that one, so my understanding is also the museum. Does certain things under their. Understanding of who is in charge of the property. And I know that they have Harvard, Harvest Host, which is another type rental.
Thing that's proved to the city also.
Right, but it's just.
But it's in the same realm of us.
So if, if it's not. Because being on the. Representative for the museum, if it's not something that goes through them, and I feel like it's pretty important to figure out. With them, what they can and can't do in that parking lot. That way, there's not a lot of. You know?
Yeah. And you know. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to say this.
Brought a lot of business to the museum. And that little parking lot isn't used a lot. Unless like, uh, uh, farmer's markets there. And so those little, that little, that one little thing. We credit, uh, increasing a lot of traffic through the museum. So it got a lot of business and a lot of donations and stuff out of it.
Yeah, it's, it's a double-edged sword. We want to make our city properties available for the public to, to enjoy for the. The health, safety, welfare, but we also want to make sure that we're protecting the, the city's ability to. Have equal enjoyment and make sure that the policies are fair and clearly defined because right now, you know. Honestly, I, I think staff, a lot of staff feel that it's not worth it for the fees that we're collecting and it's a big pain. And, you know.
Okay, so let's throw out this. There is another separation that we're coming to a new one on. And that is that for the most part up to this point, uh, rentals of these have been seasonal only. So it's been shorter periods of time and they, when they're done, they're done and they have to come back and renegotiate and renew a lease. Um, we have, uh, first request for a annual, uh, lease. That would be a occupying business. So that's something that's new and would require new policy. If it's different in any way, shape or form.
That's a good point, because we just don't have a lot of policies, like. How much land are we willing to let one of these occupy? Can it be, is it only seasonal? Can it be? All year or who is the deciding factor? What are the things that we need to make sure that we're paying attention to so we don't create a problem for the public?
I think we also have quite a few parking lots that the city does own that. There's little corners of them, like the museum parking lot specifically. There's probably three little corners in there that. People never park in, they never go to, and that's where they put the snow cone shack. And then that's why they were allowed the harvest hopes, because that part of the party one never used. So there's, and I think there's a lot of those around. Uh, our city buildings in different areas of just these little corners. So something small like what is coming up and. Like the little snow cone shacks that are there seasonally and they're, they're just putting little spots that don't get a lot of use. And I think if the city can. Get some sort of benefit from that non-use and turn it into use for something that people enjoy.
So that's a good point. I do want to throw out one other. Part of the consideration and this is, I'm, I'm not doing this to be pro or con on this one, just understand it. And that is. That sometimes we get feedback from existing businesses that we are bearing the cost of their competition. And, um, so you have to be conscious of that. I'm not saying that that's something that should be a deciding factor. You just have to be aware that. Depending on the business, for example, um, we have had some people say that. The snow cone shack at Bluff Park has been there so long, they have an unfair advantage because they'll, no one else can go to that area. And they.
Two hundred fifty dollars a month might be less than what market is.
Right, it's far less than market at the moment. So the point is, is that, uh. There are people who say I can't compete because in a private property, uh, parking lot, the rent would be higher. And you're subsidizing with my tax dollars another business. Whether that's valid or not, we have to consider that that is something that's a reflection on the city, not necessarily the business.
What if we didn't subsidize? What if it was more of a going rate?
And that is a solution and a, and a good one. I'm.
I mean, we, we had a, we had a coffee center in the city for. Many, many years that could be considered competing with a lot of those, so. But we were charging them.
But we were charging market rate, which is again, something that. Uh, again, this whole idea could be solved by saying that we have. An annual review for market rate and that the city charges the same going rate.
So I feel like the, the best argument for that is if you're only charging two hundred fifty bucks a month for a spot. But you're just renewing it to the same people every year. Other folks are correct. They never even get a chance to put in for like the lottery or anything to get that spot. It just automatically goes back and that's like a primo spot. You see the kids running through there?
And how we do it with land leases, for example, farmlands that we may not be ready to develop. They put in a bid every year and we take the highest, most competitive bid. So one year it may go to one farmer for cows, but the next year somebody comes in and says, I want to put sheep there. But I'll pay you extra for me to be able to do that. The higher bid wins. And so. And that is, that is consistent with other special districts as well.
And there's, there's two things here. There. There's rental of park property that's in our fee schedule, set amount. And then there's lease of city land. So I think. The lease of city land, it's open for negotiation as long as we have a public hearing. I think that's what we did with the AccuColor and the other businesses that.
Little parking lot spot hops.
Yeah, so that's, we can, and that's usually an annual lease that we would sign and get approval. So we've come back every year and getting it.
Yeah, I'm gonna invite Crest to the table because a lot of these parking lots are in our. And a lot of those parking lots are designed to service our parks programs, so.
Well, I just wanted to say when we get it to come across to us, we'll look at, um, the safety, because a lot of times they're gonna want to be in a parking lot. It's not safe. When we are having programs going on and even the one at Bluff, we've had it years and years. It is not safe. There are kids that dart across there. And so we'll look at that. And a lot of times if we're gonna have programs in there, we're not gonna approve it. Now for the one like at the museum, I wouldn't approve that. And that's where Noah and I talked because the maintenance of that is actually, um, public works. And so they're the ones who are gonna have to, to handle that and take care of that. So I would never approve that because it's not, you know, with my department. Um, so I think you just have to look at those things that. That's why when we say no, and you'll see in a lot of our parks, we do not allow it because it is unsafe, because where they can put it is in a parking lot. And you're gonna have children running through and doing it. And so the safety always comes into. And then we don't provide electricity. So if they have to have, figure out a way that they're going to, whether a generator or things like that. So if those things come into play. The one at the two hundred fifty dollars, like at the Bluff Ridge, we're bringing in a dumpster because there's so much garbage that is there. So that's like wiping out. So those things, those.
More expensive.
It's more expensive for us to, to maintain that. But it's in the contract that we have to make sure that the government is taken care of. So. That we bring that in because there's so much garbage.
So we change that part of the contract that they have to make sure their own.
I think we have to at this point.
You can, but it's not like that now.
Yeah.
But that's why this item's on the agenda is should we be changing general laws to the leasing responsibility? Because if we do, uh, like if we say all future or all. Existing and future are required to take care of their own dumpster and clean up because that's a big part of it, because we shouldn't be cleaning up after a business. And, and most will, but if we put it in the contract and other things is. Do we define a difference between seasonal and annual? Do we have set rates regardless of the parking lot? Sometimes we could consider that some are better options than others. Or some are just not available because of the programming and the parking required. So all that's on the table is all I'm saying.
Now, what if the Bluff Ridge, if it got moved to the other side of the.
So the way the Bluff Ridge is right now is because where that pole is, there's electrical. And that company is the one that came in and actually paid to have that electrical in. So when you say. People that are, you know, that aren't getting a shot, it's because this person put a lot of money in there to make sure that they could have. Electrical going and the council at that time approved for them to do that. So that is why. And it's right where, that's right there on that corner of why it has to stay there.
But I asked.
So for me, if we're going to allow, whether it's part. Parking lots or other parking lots, if we're going to allow. Areas in the city to lease out portions of parking lot. A, does it make sense? It would have to be at market rate. And does it make sense financially for the extra work and burden? On, on staff? And if it does, then why wouldn't we choose and select designated spots that these are for lease because.
I would almost pour a small pad or, or put down gravel.
Because otherwise we're going to be taking just any random solicitation for, hey, we want. One here. If we're, if we're, if we're open to the idea, why don't we identify the areas and put them out to, you know, to bid every year and say, hey. This is available for a food truck minimum bid as such. You're welcome to put a proposal and a, and a bid in for it. But I guess the big question is, does it make, does it generate enough revenue for the amount of work that it?
Yeah, so we.
Or don't pop for it, out to bid. If someone contacts us, we let, that these spots available, like.
Yeah, it was an option. We, we called all the cities. We're the only one that does this. And there's probably a reason why, because it's a pain. It's, it takes a lot of staff resources.
Now I'm gonna throw one more twist out there for discussion. This is not about parking lots, but we still rent, uh, city land that is undeveloped for different things like firework stands. And this week I kind of had an issue because I was driving down Antelope and saw this. Series of containers over there between, uh, Pack and Maverick. And, uh, I'm like, who is dumping warehouse supplies on our lawn, on our lots? And, um, apparently it is in the contract that they said they're gonna have three containers. And then when I was coming home, because I didn't know what it was, I thought I'd come and check it out. Turns out they're using our lot as a distribution point and they got people going in there at night, shuffling the boxes and moving stuff around into trailers and. I just thought this is, this is more than we've ever done before. And it makes us look like we're a shipping yard in, right on Main Street. So that's a concern for me. I don't think we should be letting that. I understand that. Certain businesses have some storage requirements, but we should become a distribution center. We should probably talk about making that not a part of our future.
Or, or, you know, if they want to store things there, they, that we can charge them a port fee. Inland port.
Anyway, the point is, is that we just, we do have to talk about all of these impacts and it's probably gonna be a change in policy of some sort. For us to do anything going forward, because we don't have very consistent, uh. Policies with other cities.
So what if we did do seasonal, but that like seasonal is rel- rel- relative, relative. In each scenario, like this one, I think we're fit in both. But at the end of each season, you'd have to reapply to use space for the next season. And like Paul said, but in like identifiable spots, so we know like where we're comfortable putting people. Or little spaces that it's not gonna cause. Backup safety concerns for a lot of kids and for, well, for most of the kids.
I think that's what's hard, because the places they want to be at is where all the kids are. Especially like summer and the beginning of summer and stuff. So we'd have to find really good spots that they're not going to do that, because they want to be in like Canterbury Park. They want to be at Founders and we don't allow.
Cause everybody wants to be next to a bath.
Yeah, well, they have to. They have, if they're there, they have to use, we have to sign a paper that says they can use our restrooms. So they have to be near.
And, and who, who pays to pour the pad and bring the power over and that.
Yeah.
Probably outside.
Most of mine would think of the generators, except that one's.
But that's like a one-time upfront cost. Cement is expensive. I mean, it's talking thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars to, to.
I, I'm not saying we need to do that now. I'm just saying if we're gonna do this, first of all, I think we need to do it at market rate. Second of all, we need to make sure that there's a safety assessment and that they understand the guidelines. And yeah, if they're. And then obviously in the contract has to be garbage has to be taken care of. Electricity has to be taken care of. And then what else am I missing? I guess I love food trucks. I really want to find a way to make this work.
And I'm receiving on this very excellent, so come on, let's.
So like the, the little snow shack at, uh, Bluff Ridge Park, I know, uh, maybe other cities don't do it, but like. All the kids in the neighborhood love it. They ride the scooters down and.
Has it actually been hurt over?
Aren't they, aren't they just seasonal?
Okay, so let me, let me try to pare it down to a couple of questions to help us go forward. So the first one I would say is. Are we open to continuing seasonal rentals?
I would say yes.
Yeah.
We're open to continue seasonal rentals, but not increasing our ability to host.
Okay, well, I mean, just in general, this is, this is on the table. Okay. Alright, I, I think market value's been established. And. The second one is, are we willing to entertain an annual rental policy for spaces in the city?
Why would it be annual though if it's seasonal up?
Well, what they're saying is, but if they want to spin up shop.
If they said I want to be in the same place all year long and I would, uh, willing to sign an annual contract for one year. The question is, would we?
And then they, and then they hold that spot for twenty years at. But then every year they renew it.
It's possible.
Didn't we just say that the snow shack's been there?
Yeah, but most, yeah, but I, if these one years is like that, you can keep renewing it.
They changed.
Yeah.
What, what I, what I would suggest if we go down that, that route is we identify the locations, we're gonna have these.
That's my next point.
When we do it, when we do, uh, either, you know, minimum bids, some sort of competitive or lottery system for these places. Uh, we award, um, like a multi-year, I would say, because the businesses want to be able to plan ahead. Sometimes they're not profitable for two or three years.
But, uh, what if they don't do well?
Okay, then, then they, they leave and then we rebid it out.
But they signed a contract for multi-year.
But if you sign a contract for multiple years, then we don't have to do the bidding process every season. We already have somebody there who won.
Reduce the staff time.
So say they're there for six months. Could, could they do that like a six-month?
For three years.
Yeah.
Right.
And because what is their buyout of their lease gonna cost them if they don't, if their business doesn't go on for six months?
If they go out, they go out and the next year.
We, we're not gonna.
Yeah, we're not.
Because if it's like a multiple year thing, you're gonna have to opt out of your contract. And usually there's a thing for that.
I think if they go out, they just leave and we, the next year we.
And I would assume from like with most of our contracts, we put it in. That if there's something that comes up with us to the, either one of us can drop out, because there might be a.
Right, right.
Destruction project or something that's going on.
It'd be nice if there's a standard contract that we just use for all of these. And we don't want to be collecting rent every month. It'd be a fee upfront or whatever the term is.
Okay. Uh, public works director, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just real quick, uh, this parking lot maintenance, right? So we still maintain parking lots for, uh, we'll resurface them, sometimes stripe, re-strive them.
Yeah.
Crack seal them. Um, and in the wintertime, if it does turn out, these have never usually been over the winter, but it turns out to be over the winter, there's snow falling too. So it's. You know, how do we handle just general maintenance of the parking lot? So.
So let me, so let me go back to the question. Are we willing to consider longer contracts or we could, even in the case where somebody is interested in being there for a year term? We could renew it seasonally or, or write it and say that every season it gets reviewed or something. That's more work, but I'm just saying that these are the options. So I just want to know what you're, have an appetite for. So do we entertain annual?
I'm fine with annual and, and for all of these, they have to have a Syracuse business line.
I'm fine with annual and and for all of these, they have to have a Syracuse business license. License and the point of sale is Syracuse.
Yes, all that's accurate.
Okay, good. Then I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that's one.
What what is the liability exposure to that?
That's a good question.
We would have to address that in the contract.
And what would that look like? I mean, they they get a policy, but somebody runs over a kid. And they say, well, the city didn't plan this right. What is the?
So generally, we say something to the effect of any actions done by. The person who is not the city, they're responsible for them and their employees and our agents and so forth. We require a liability contract. We usually have a million dollars. Per occurrence and two to three million dollars in the aggregate. And we require them to provide us proof of that insurance.
With us listed as an insurer, right?
With us listed as an insurer, so that if they cancel midstream, hopefully the insurance company notifies us. That's how we've done similar things.
We do that.
Special event, we require at least.
So that's that's just standard.
Yeah.
So hopefully. We get a copy of the contract or at least, you know, proof of the contract and hopefully we get notified if the contract gets canceled or not paid for.
But to Brett's point, if it's on city property and we have leased this out, does the city? Have any of the liability for customers? Because how do we differentiate between a customer and a parking lot, say, public?
Yeah, arguably, yes.
So that that's, you know, that is question and a good one.
I I do have a problem for me.
Yeah.
And I do, I do have special concerns about the winter time.
Yeah.
One, because of the 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 higher likelihood of an accident on our on our parking lot with people walking, ice, things like that. Uh, we don't want our people plowing our parking for parks and and roads and whatnot to. Now they're now they're serving a business instead of the public, right? Uh, oh, you didn't plow, you know, right in front of my my food truck uh yesterday. Could you come back and? And uh clean that up, because now it's all stacked up right where my customers line up. Uh, we don't wanna be doing that.
I mean, we can set the parameter wherever we want. If we only wanna allow allow it during non-winter months, then we only allow it during non-winter months.
And that's the question.
Or 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 we say you get this plot of land and you're in charge of. Of any winter, any any maintenance, any shoveling, anything like that. Say, this is your plot of land and. Yes, the snowplow will probably take care of some of it, but we have no obligation to to groom your land.
So they'd have assigned parking and then if somebody wanna go to our park, they can't park there.
Well, no, what they would have is they would have ten feet in front of their cart. What I'm assuming are gonna be taking up two stalls, three stalls. That those stalls are not.
Plus their customer parking.
So plus plus their customer walking area. I don't think for a food truck, we guarantee customer parking. We guarantee someone can walk up their truck.
Now, for a commercial business, we would require a certain number of parking stalls. We're treating them unequal playground.
Okay, but at the same time, those are, this is a park, so I'm not willing to guarantee parking. If it's a busy time, they're hoping to have.
But you could. So I this is an interesting point. I don't think. Some actual parking, but you could say you're responsible to make sure cleared and accessible. Is a certain number, the same number that we would require a brick and mortar. So.
So they're in charge of keeping.
Yeah.
Certain number of stalls to clear.
Clear. They don't, I I mean, it doesn't mean somebody else can't park there. But just like a business, you would have to say, okay, I'm required to have five spots, so I have to make sure five spots are cleared at all times.
I don't think it's unreasonable to be like, yeah, we don't normally do this. So if we do this. Clean it up yourself. You gotta clean your own snow and where your patrons would park at, make sure you clean that stuff up too, okay? I'm doing business with you and we're gonna come talk to you if you don't.
But but there is the other side of it that they are not guaranteed the use of those stalls, because this is a park.
It's public.
It is a public parking lot.
Right, so let me go on to the next question that I think has to be dealt with in the policy and that is. Um, do we want to, if we entertain regular leases? Do we want to identify places in the city where we will accept designated business lots? And those would be the only ones that are options, or are we gonna take it in a case by case basis upon what gets requested?
I think initially I would go case by case.
I would prefer, and I think Noah would prefer, that we decide on where we will allow people to go, because it's so hard. They come, it's to the business licenses, so they come to Noah, but he's. Then he's trying to get ahold of me and I'm like, well, not until I see a site map and then it just goes back and forth.
I think we identify the spots for.
I I think identifying them, spots I agree with, but advertising them, I don't.
Why didn't advertise?
I didn't wanna advertise my.
I'm just curious if there's some spots that we haven't thought of that'd be like, I suppose that makes sense.
Well, and I think that we could always remember.
Right here next to City Hall.
The proposal that I'm making at this point would be, if you're gonna put designated spots, you could say. These are conducive more to safety and liability issues, so they're the ones that Noah can uh address as available if someone asks. I wouldn't advertise them, but I would say these are the only ones you have to go to first and anything outside of that takes a new discussion. That's what I would suggest.
Okay, yeah, I would agree with that. So it's kinda like a first come, first served basis, but we charge a market rate.
Says, hey, we're looking for this, like, what conveniently, we know a couple spots.
We are not prepared to solve tonight, but we could in a future meeting say. Here's the possible spaces or here's the top three or five that we come up with that we would be willing to entertain as rentals.
Well, and also increase the fee so that it covers the.
And then if I get phone calls and the two or three or five spots that are already full, I just sound like, oh, sorry, we're full.
And and then you can say, look, that that that'll this'll come up for bid on such and such date. You're welcome to put in a proposal.
Okay.
For if we're not. If if we're if we have bids, then we have to advertise.
Hmm, that's right.
Right, so increase the fee.
I think we increase the fee as first come, first served, whatever the market rate is, and then we set a schedule. Of when we review it, whether it's every year or every other year, or even every five years, we set a schedule that we review the market rate. So that we're being fair to our citizens.
Okay, yeah, cuz I was hearing two different things I was hearing. It's just first come, first served, they pay the market rate that we set.
Yeah.
But I also heard uh we would go out to bid, which means we advertise, hey, well, these are available.
You know, like they all sign a lease and if they want state of state.
I guess my concern is, so so would would the the person who's there now get any kind, any kind of? Of. Um, priority, or is it just like, sorry, you didn't. Yeah, someone else can't got here the an hour before you and you gotta move.
I I do think that that we give some priority to renewal of a space that you're existing in, but I don't think that you can. Do if someone lets it lapse, especially for a period of time, it it's like, yeah, well, I didn't answer you for a month. I think that it's.
Just like, I mean, you're in rental, like, just like a rental house, you know, and at the edge, you've got it coming up in a month. You gotta sign your next agreement, otherwise we expect you to be gone at the end of that month, you know?
Well, but we, I mean, we're talking public land too. So there has to. I I guess my question is, if we're not bidding and we've got a one, let's say a one-year agreement with uh, you know, a snowshoe. And we've got another, that's coming up to, that lease term is coming to an end and we've got another. Snowshoe that says, hey, I want a chance at getting this. Why does this snowshoe get there? Just cuz they renew every year. That's where you're gonna, that's, I think that's.
Well, that's where we offer more.
So I bet there's some sort of public owned. Like not a state or national park that has some sort of lease agreement with something inside of it that would give us a good example of. How they lease public land.
Well, we could say that.
If it's a bid or if it's a regular lease to lease often.
Leases end on a certain day and will accept. Uh, uh, you see, you bring a very good question. Yeah, which is a public.
But I think that's okay if you do like a multi-year. Like, cuz it cuz then it reduces all of the turnover.
Cuz we do a multi-year lease with built-in acceleration each year, so that you're not just renting it. You know, the same rate for three years, which would have been increased. So we have a built-in escalation and do a multi-year and at the end of that multi-year, then we offer it up. Cuz then it's only three years or.
Whatever it is.
Whatever the term is, and then you're not dealing with it every year.
Okay. So.
Was an opt-out for both parties?
That's always.
Yeah, either party can lock away.
I, you know, I think that at least a lot of contracts I deal with, we we require a thirty-day notice. You can't just not show up one day. You've you've gotta pay that last round, yeah. Um, okay, so I think we've got the structure of what a new policy is gonna look like from this discussion. And we will bring it back to another session, because this has got a lot of net news. I think we bring it back to one more work session to review where we landed with all of these questions before we set the new policy. All right, I'm gonna move us on. The next is a request for consideration of lease of city property for a mobile food operation. This mobile food operation is a coffee vendor and they're uh looking specifically at the uh. Uh museum parking lot up against uh Centennial Park. And the question is, is would we be willing to entertain, uh what was proposed was an annual lease? Um, for the same location and there are some questions that go with that, but first question is. Are we willing to entertain such a business in such a lease?
I wanted a little coffee shop for so long.
Okay, so you're a yes. Okay, other que- you know.
Well, I I think the discussion we just had, we've got some questions that would have to be resolved in that before we could. Make a determination on this. The question that I have, so that, so the city, we own that building and that parking lot. But what is our agreement with the?
Museum.
With the museum, do they have control over that or can we unilateral?
It's shared parking and the shared parking is between Centennial Park and. So we have parking on multiple sides of Centennial Park, but that is identified as city uh property, not. Belonging solely to the museum. We don't really care if it's museum patrons or park patrons. We kind of assume that both are necessary, but.
But between a museum with elderly folks and a police station, like where is the best spot for a coffee shop?
Also, this is a year-round.
Oh, I'm not saying the spot's bad, I'm just. Our our uh our obligation to to keep that open for any particular use, it's open to all uses.
This is a year-round business, twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five every day of the week. That is open. It's a coffee, I mean.
Yeah, in in the proposal, they they put what their hours would. And they also highlighted a few of their proposed.
Well, okay, not twenty-four, seven, but it's definitely.
They wanna leave the thing twenty-four, seven.
It's pretty much a permanent.
Which is different than a normal food truck which leaves at the end of the evening.
Right, a coffee shop, a little coffee, you know, trailer is a whole different. Kinda animal.
So that being a park, will they have anything for the kids?
Well, yeah, they have a menu that's included in it.
So I.
That was the other packet.
So can we, can that little museum handle a permanent little coffee shack?
Well, whatever, can it handle a permanent business?
So we would, in 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 the previous discussion, we would have determined that as one of our.
Yes.
Free improved spots. I mean, it seems like a reasonable location for one. I don't think that parking lot is ever.
Yeah.
Farmer's market, that's it.
I just wanna make sure that you that the applicants know, you guys know, we do not have restrooms open.
In the museum.
Well, I don't know.
Oh, that's right.
So there would have to be like affordable restroom or something probably, because they have. But we will not have our bathrooms open in that park year.
And it will be year-round, so is is this going to be a little drive-through?
Oh, in fact, that's that's a real liability if you consider, it's gotta be a walk-up.
In the packet, there's a picture of what they're proposing.
And and again, back to, uh again, I think it's kinda hard to make a determination on the.
Right.
That going back to that. Again, do we even want to entertain year-long ones or do we only want to entertain seasonal ones? Because Robert mentioned some challenges with snowplowing, things like that, so.
So if we're, if this would, this specific one would be going in the same spot where that snow cone shack was. They they left theirs there for quite some time and it. They they had a ton of business, but it it didn't really cause much of a problem in that parking lot. Cuz a lot of their business came from the park. And the kids came through the park and not from the parking lot, whereas the coffee drinkers are coming from the parking lot and not necessarily. Or the PD.
Yeah, we we don't really.
Yeah, their window faced out onto the sidewalk, the snow cone people did. I don't know which direction they want their window to face.
Well, again, that's optional, I think. The question really comes into, are we open to this?
I I think, I mean, we've had something there already.
I'm open to the idea prefacing that we have to figure out our.
Yeah, we have to find the policy before we. This is devoting meeting anyway, but I need to know if there's support, really.
I mean, I would consider this.
Okay. Brother Julie?
I I I'm, I can consider it. I think it it's a, it's a great idea. I just. Location wise, I just wanna make sure that's the best thing to do. Yeah, I just. Just seems that little coffee shops, people wanna get in and get out, so it's like, they don't wanna get out of the car. And I know you're saying there's no way that they can drive through.
Yeah, you can't do a drive-through on it.
I I think we should have. Yeah, that would have to be a restriction.
Thinking winter, winter time.
They're not conducive to drive up.
You can hear when I heard the concept, I asked the same question, would somebody run out to a car? Because if you do, you're now creating a hazard.
Yeah.
But I think that we just put it in the terms that that would not be an allowable use.
A walk-up only.
Yeah, which I think is, I think people, operators generally understand.
Trucks, that's, yeah, that's not gonna be surprised for any food truck operator.
What do you think about spreads? Until somebody slips on the thing and.
Do that anywhere.
But the the issue is, is that if they do it anywhere, they're doing it with a private business who has insurance in this. City property, but for me to entertain it, I would want to know what the net income to the city would be generated. I would want to see what it, whether there would be any disincentive to a permanent. Business coming in.
Right.
And I would need to see what the liability and exposure is to see.
Okay, I appreciate that, you're welcome.
Um. Uh, one more thing I was gonna bring up, and I forgot. Anybody else on this? I wanna try to remember.
We had talked about having him move the trailer every night and not leave it parked there. I don't know what.
Which is more what a food truck does, cuz they don't leave it sitting.
Person just leaving it sitting there parked all year. Well, if there's things going on in the evening, they're gonna be open in the morning. To serve the coffee and then if there was an evening event, that would free up their. Three stalls or if we're making.
Seems like they would want to service that.
I'm trying to find if what what their hours of operation.
Or if in the winter, uh a lot of times storms come in overnight, it's easier to plow.
Yeah, I still think a seasonal restriction might be in a policy.
Not even. I remember what I was gonna bring up. Now, here's one other thought, and I'm just throwing this out for discussion and ideas sake. Um. One of the things that when this request came in, the question was why this spot? Why not one of the the uh private parking lots? And the suggestion was that they'd struggled to get ahold of people with, from the private ownership. And I can understand that, some of these leasing groups are very difficult to reach. An alternative to this, and I'm just throwing this out for discussion, not saying this is where we should go. But if we were to say we want to not take on the responsibility of the city being involved in this. We could provide the service from the city of helping people reach privately owned parking lots. That doesn't mean we can help them negotiate any terms, but we could at least help them get in touch with the right people, which. Puts all of the issues of public and and uh. City-owned property to bed, so that's one other alternative to that.
I I actually like option C, all of the above.
Okay.
So it would be nice if we had a list of contact information for various uh spots throughout, because anytime we can get a business into the city. And get it up and operating, I feel like that's a win for the community. Um, and so I would like to be able to have, you know, that list of. Of here's a few of the larger parking lots that maybe you're interested in, here's the kind of information. And then if none of these work, we do have a few spots available at market rate that. Um, also are in the mix. But I I agree, I would prefer them to be on private land instead of public just because of the risk.
Okay, cheap. Okay, chief.
Uh, this is just an observation, but this can be dealt with, I'm sure in the contract. I just wanna make sure everybody thinks of this. But if you approve the parking ordinance tonight and somebody parks that there for more than forty eight hours, they would technically be in violation of.
Yeah, let's.
And give them some kind of exception to.
Okay. So I'm gonna wrap this up and say this is where we've landed. We've landed on a revision of our uh city owned. Uh, property leases and uses. And we have an outline of what that's gonna look like, that we will come back to another work session with. I'm gonna tell the applicant that we are open to this option. But we're gonna have to bet out the details still before we give any final approval.
Okay, one more question.
Go ahead.
Can we lease out U dot parking ride lots?
Play that off topic until we get to that on.
Okay.
Because you, I had that in the in the other item on the agenda.
It's related.
It is related.
Let's let's, yeah. I will hold my question.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, so I'm gonna move us on from uh planning items, uh item C. Item D, items involving U dot Department of Transportation. Yes, item number one, continued discussion of proposed amendments to Syracuse Municipal Code, section eleven dot twenty pertaining to enforcement. Of parking relation or regulations on state owned properties. And I am going to open up more than one of these at a time, sorry, but because, and here's why. Uh, consideration of the agreement is also on maintenance of the first one of this is also the next item. And we have talked with U dot and put out a radical proposal that uh. Apparently hasn't been done before.
That's the only reason it's radical.
If we're going to take over the maintenance, we suggested to U dot they give us ownership of the parking lot. And uh if that were the case, we could in fact entertain a uh. A business license for a mobile business uh in a parking ride. We could also entertain that that became overflow for a business. Or other said uses, so.
That would have to be overflowed.
Yeah, it would have to be overflowed, not primary.
Be part of their primary.
No, yeah, but you might be able to get a business that has the potential to grow beyond its original capacity. And use utilize that if it was nearby.
I think as long as the primary use.
Yes.
Yes, parking right is a parking right, you're okay.
But again, if the city property isn't still a parking ride.
Yes, they would have a reversionary clause and.
Okay.
But if you don't leave it as a parking ride, then ownership goes back.
Because as far as I can tell from all of this, we're in charge of everything except for maybe uh repaving it in.
They want that.
Oh, they want us to repay it too. I I missed that.
Of all maintenance.
Then what the heck uh?
With no funding from the state.
Parking lot and said, good luck, fellas. By the way, we still own this.
This is this is why I say we own it.
Yeah, that you're you're in a you're in a different situation. This is different from the trail one.
And it's still our cops or U H P?
Regardless regardless of who owns it, it's our police department that will be in. So that one we can get away. Um, we we do have the option of saying we're not gonna do any of this and U dot it's yours. But there are consequences to that too, because U dot's priority of managing these properties is gonna be. About as low as the weed control is, so uh there there will be. Uh, with that.
And they're not going to U dot because they don't know how to get a hold of them. That's the bottom.
Can we get them in touch with U dot? It's gonna. You just have to understand, if it's under U dot management, it's gonna be under U dot. So so those are the options though that we have.
So I would like to take these over and. But I mean, if we're already doing everything.
I know.
Then what's the point? And we will maintain them as parking ride lots. We will do all the stuff they're gonna currently telling us to do anyway. I see it now.
Yeah.
Ours is not theirs.
But now they're ours and we can actually utilize them and make them an asset to the community instead of, you know, someone paid.
I think there's.
The parking lot.
I think they're gonna be more of a liability than an asset.
Well, sure.
Anyways, because they're like.
Yeah, I don't think we get away from the life.
Well, I'm talking about an expense liability.
Yeah, so let's try and cut our losses just a little bit and and try and actually make it so actually.
Thank you for the parking lots.
Become a resource.
So we we did check with other cities and including the other cities who are taking these over on this seg- segment of highway. Hundred percent it's falls on the city all up and down the state to take care of parking rides.
There is no requirement. Uh, this they all have, the the cities have taken it on. Um, but there is no, there is no law or or administrative policy of U dot that that it's that it goes to the city.
Well, like I go up to the Clearfields uh where the train, like that place looks terrible. And if that's how U dot maintains it or whatever they do.
That's not, I don't think that's even U dot, that's U T A.
That's U T A.
But but I'm not sure that it would look any different if it was U dot.
Yeah, it's uh.
U dot has the the old uh um rest stops on I fifteen.
Yeah.
That gives you an idea of.
Here's the the other twist to this, and that would be that when U T A does come in, if U dot owns these properties. U T A and U dot considering a agreement that doesn't involve cities. But if we own them, U T A has to make the agreement with us. So if you notice, a lot of parking rides become bus stops. I would rather have ownership and control so that we can say, make sure that you have distances, traffic, timing. Shelter, whatever, as opposed to, as opposed to you not saying, yeah, whatever you want, you know, because we wouldn't get any of that.
Yeah.
And if we're taking out or taking care of all of these things, I have a problem with them being able to come and be like, well, we're gonna do this now. So thanks for your efforts. Hold on, no.
So I guess what's the discussion here? Except the discussion is, do we want?
Discussion is, will we take them over? Because we would have to vote in the next meeting to accept them.
I feel like by and large, we are already doing everything in them.
Yes.
So the only thing is, is who gets to control them?
But this is unprecedented, no other cities ever.
You have to first agree that you will maintain them.
We're doing it anyway.
I I think we can't get away.
What I don't want is to have a giant weed trap that is that we call a parking lot and. Cause we we.
The alternative is it's awful, that's why cities all have agreed to take them off.
Why do you think that U dot would be open to this idea?
We asked them.
Oh, so yes. You'd be willing to accept.
They said yes.
Yes, for me.
That's.
Alright, that was too easy. What are they hiding?
They're not hiding anything. It's a worthless parking lot that is a liability for it. Oh, okay, here's this free land. Now take care of it.
One at a time.
What's the additional cost to maintain it?
Uh, it often changes whether we own it or not. They would give it to us for free.
If we if we did, if I wanna take ownership, I think we could do an estimate um by the next meeting. Um, and and put that together. It would be. You know, there's there's the the occasional repaving and crack ceiling, which is long term costs, not every year. Um, and then there's 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 restriping and then there's the the plowing. The plowing and the weed maintenance and the garbage maintenance is probably the the biggest cost anyway.
But we have to do that anyway.
Maturity rate.
Or we just. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we either have to do it or we just let it go.
Wait, 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 we you either ask, we either do it or wait for U dot to do it and it might be once a year, is that what you're saying?
And we feel complaints from every citizen that lives around every single one of them.
And we're constantly calling you dot to come dump the trash.
And look at, they're gonna need another person or two though.
So we can, we can estimate based on like a typical snow year and things like that.
They're probably gonna need another person or two though for this.
Can we?
I'll make sure.
It's probably true. Uh, can we prohibit uh? Yeah, it's me right now. Uh, can we prohibit uh? The the multi ton vehicles from parking out of like, you know, like.
It the only chance we have is if we own it. If you dot own it, owns it, they will not release it in any way, shape or form. We own it.
But what are the guidelines for a parking ride lot? Are 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 semi trucks allowed to park there?
Well, if we own it, we can make those.
We can make those rules.
But as it is right now.
Yes, they can.
Okay.
Are they just.
But on less than twenty four hours, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Whatever our ordinance is, right?
If they just give it to us mayor, do we have to purchase it?
No, we do not have to purchase it. That that was one of our requests was if we're gonna take over all of this. We would like ownership and we're not buying it. We're we're giving, being gifted it. And we're the first to ask, and I think that we're the first to take advantage of it.
Weird. Um. The secondary item is. How can we, I would like to get you U T A access to all of these. How can, how do we make that request?
So um the person in charge of that is Beth Holbrook. She was just reappointed to another four year term by the governor this last week. And she was at uh the um. Uh, Conference of Governments and um so I have been working on that.
Can we invite her to a city council meeting?
We can. Might be, yeah, okay, I'll try.
All you should do is ask.
Oh, I'm sure I can get her here, but. Yeah, hey, that'll be interesting.
If you don't ask, the answer's always no.
Oh, no, we could get her here. Because see, it's not gonna get very far. We're gonna have to be careful how.
Let may maybe let's set up a a small meeting with just.
Everything so far, here's here's the challenge over. Over the last four year term, all of the attention of U T A has gone to I fifteen. And almost all inner city, uh no one is is looking at city routes at this time. So that's a constant problem that we have faced as a cog, trying to push. For first of all, east and west of I fifteen gets considered and second. That we actually look at what, how do people get around a city? Because just know that even Leighton doesn't have U T A. They provide their own bus to get people around Leighton. So what Leighton has is bus stops that get you between Farmington and Leighton and Ogden and Leighton. And we're trying in Davis County to try and get them to say, some of our cities are big enough that we could have a route. And Leighton decided to pay for their own. I'm not saying that we're to that point. But that's the problem that we have with U T A is they're only looking at getting people long distances right now. Not short distances.
So what if there are only stops where the parking rides along corridor in the Farmington?
Well, that would be a start and it's been proposed. But right now, they've said, well, the freeway just opened up in their mind, even though we've been open for two years. But in their mind, it was yesterday, so we're trying to get that looked at.
Okay. So I guess go bringing us back to.
Yeah.
U dot, I think we're we're, it seems like we've got some type of uh. Agreement on taking those over and letting us.
Yes.
Their destiny.
It'll take an official motion in the next meeting.
Is that?
Just to a certain extent, there will be a reversionary clause on.
Sure.
It it does have to be primarily a parking ride.
It it sounds like a good idea to me. My question is, will there need to be additional staffing? And if the answer to that is yes, then we need to start thinking about how that additional staffing is going to be addressed.
Absolutely agree.
And I think that that was a necessary part of this, no matter whether we to own it or not, we're gonna have to take care of it. So yes, that's gonna have to be in future consideration.
Yeah, we may consider doing this by contract.
Yeah.
Just have, you know, like a like the grocery stores contract with a.
And we may do weed control by contract because this would be a big open space that we don't have to um, yeah. So it is a cost, but it could be done by contract as a space that's not particular, because nobody plays on it, nobody. It would just be, you know, weed remission.
Yeah, well, I think they do theirs up just out there parking right, right there by contract snowplow. I think I remember seeing that's a contract snowplow in them. Yeah.
But if we're doing this regardless of whether we own it or they own it.
We have to pay.
This this way at least, well, we're gonna pay for it regardless. This way at least, if we can say, hey, you can put a food truck or something on this, it allows us to recoup.
It does, it helps us. You know, it really is a way to. Here's uh. So we we've kind of lumped all the U dot items together, so let's talk about the master landscaping agreement to just round it out. Cause we're kind of talking about all of it.
Um, okay, so we're going to D four.
Yeah. Cause we've kind of covered D one, two and three.
Uh, well, three, three's the trail.
Three.
Three's the trail.
Yeah, so the trail, the trail, we're in a little bit different situation, so. The the trail along the the new highway was already there and was a Syracuse trail. They just, they just destroyed it and then rebuilt it for us, so. That's our, that's our trail. We're gonna have to retain it. Um, the the section between the highway and two thousand West. The trail that was built between those two points.
Replaces.
Was at the request of Syracuse City, so they're just asking us to re- to to maintain the trails that are. Essentially large, so that's a little bit different situation.
Okay.
We already owned it, it's replacing something we already had.
Yeah, and they built a section that would be requested.
Yeah.
So making responsibilities, what you're gonna get.
They're saying you.
We don't really have choice, yeah.
The only, the only, I think, decision point in that situation, especially on on analog. We really don't have a, we haven't really decided how we're gonna maintain that trail because. If it were a sidewalk, it would default to the adjacent property owner. Uh, uh, under our, so. Um, if if we do that for a trail. Some property owners are quicker than others, and so you might have a patchwork of, you know. Snowplow trail and then three feet of snow, you know. Uh, various levels of maintenance. So again, we gotta decide and this. This is staffing power, this is time, this is equipment. Uh, are we maintaining the trail on or or are we just gonna lead it to the adjacent property?
I'm not cleaning the trail if I live next to it, I'm sorry.
Well, one of the trot problems is that some of this trail really isn't even adjacent to a property owner. You think of all of the stuff between twenty five hundred and the freeway exit. It is because of the way they redesigned the road.
That will probably be ours no matter.
No matter what, yeah.
Yeah, that's actually.
Oh, you built a trail, happy for you. I'm still not cleaning it. So I think the city probably definitely has to. I wouldn't expect a property owner to clean it. Sidewalk, yes, trail, no.
We do have this in other places in the city where we have replaced sidewalk with trail. And it wasn't very exciting the first year when when people said, oh. Now I have instead of a four foot sidewalk, an eight foot sidewalk. How exciting.
Yeah, and and I will say for for the park and rec staff, which is the staff that would maintain this. Um, the the trail along the highway for the last three years. We we hadn't been, we haven't had to maintain it because it wasn't there, right? So that's coming back online, but that's not additional because we had it before. But but the section between the highway and two thousand West is all an addition.
Is it only snow removal or is there?
Weeds. Weeds.
Yeah, weeds are less frequent, but it is a maintenance, annual maintenance.
And uh crack seal, sometimes asphalt cracks.
How is robotic snow removal?
Actually pretty good, and I've been trying to get us a a Tesla lineup. We've got some really cool snowplow drones. That uh work on their own power. It's amazing.
Yeah, we'd love that to be a solution.
Yeah.
How much are those?
Eight thousand dollars.
What did we save on that?
But eight thousand dollars is a lot cheaper than an employee because they never get sick, they never take days off.
You know, I I I I say they do get sick and do shit days off. As anyone that has had any type of automated thing, realize there is a certain level of.
And then guess what? You gotta rely on a human to come fix it.
I I have a great video of one that I saw at ULCT this year of the snow blowing drone, really exciting.
How are we going to pay for this?
Pay for the maintenance?
We just talked about a whole bunch of additional costs and expense. Where where's that coming from?
Well, it's parked, so we'll be planting money trees.
Wait for Costco.
I mean, yeah, we've got a problem. We're gonna have to pay for it in the future.
My and I I honestly, I mean, I can't expect a response to that. That isn't the. That isn't a fair question, but it needs to start being looked at now. Rather than next spring.
Yeah. Yeah. It it is in our twenty twenty seven budget discussion.
And we have, we have new trails and and we're happy to have them.
Yeah.
We're blessed to have them. The residents love our 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 trail, our trail system, we want more trail system.
We don't wanna pay for them, that's the point.
We have to figure out, like like Brent said, we will figure out.
We do, we have to figure it out.
It's a wonderful thing.
And we can get a couple of these parking things to pay for a new employee.
Well, there are, there are options. I mean, one is that you will outsource some of the management of trails, it's still money. But it might be cheaper. It is an option that we hire more employees. Because that's an option coming into the next year.
And I think if we can add automation to the process.
Automation is an option which could save us money, do more with the people we have. So all of those are, all of those have to be discussions in the future.
I mean, I don't think, I I don't think do more with the people we have, it's really, they're pretty stretched.
I agree.
Well.
They're pretty stretched and some of them, I mean, have you, okay.
Sometime, I guess my point is to that, sometimes better tools let them do more with the same amount of time or.
Oh, yeah, that lawnmower dog, he's great, the marker, the thing that makes the.
Maybe, do we have to wait until next spring to decide what that? What anticipated cost will be?
No.
We should be able to have some sort of an idea what that looks like sooner rather than later. Start finding. Come up with a plan on how that is going to be addressed. Because maybe it's rainy daytime, I don't know what it will be. But there's going to be an increased cost that is coming into this. I don't know how much the coffee stand is going to generate for the city.
Well, he's not gonna cover that.
How many, how many coffee shops, i- if we're, if we're going to. Bet the future on the coffee shop, how many of those do we need in order to offset?
I mean, I get, I get the logic of it, but bet the future on a coffee shop, you know?
No, I I was being facetious.
But I get the logic.
I'm just saying that how many of these park and ride?
Putting to cover the costs of one employee or maintenance, something to cover it.
My 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 point is, is that I'm not, I'm I'm not. Costco is wonderful, it's coming in, Costco pays for firefighters.
That's what I say, Costco's the paper, nine firefighters.
Take care of trails, it doesn't take care of anything else, so. Coming into this next year, what are we going to do? Because to me. Either taxes have to be pumped or we're or we're dipping into something, or there's gotta be more revenue generation, but I'm not sure what that. Looks like.
Absolutely. But but I I don't feel like the co- the the coffee shop is playing into any of these.
No, 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 and and. And maybe I I was using that as an example because that's what was brought up tonight, I'm not saying that. At at all, what I'm saying is, is that these, these additional businesses that are coming in is not going to offset.
You're you're saying there will be a need to find revenue sources either in additional business or a tax increase? What I'm hearing you say.
And and I don't know how much additional business it would take to do this, because I have no idea what it's going to take. To do this maintenance and who staff it and have everything taken care of, but there's no reason why we have to wait for that.
Are you sure that we can't put a logo on our water tower? That'd be great, advertisable space.
Yes, we are sure, that is written into the contract.
We're maintaining trail system right now, we're already maintaining trail system, so we do know how much per foot or whatever it costs to maintain. A trail system, so we can find out today what it's gonna cost.
Not today.
Well, you know, but yes, I mean, pretty. We know what it costs.
In the next meeting or two, we can have all those discussions and it certainly is part of the ongoing management of the city. But first question is, are we doing it? Because if we're doing it, then we have a need to figure out how do we pay for it? We're not doing it, we don't have to take that.
Well, it doesn't look like we have a choice.
We don't.
Hours.
Hey, so.
Yeah, the the ma- on D four, the master landscape agreement, you've already passed a resolution committing. That will maintain the improvements that we're doing with the.
Yeah.
Gateway signage at the intersection of Antelope and.
But U dot wants a separate agreement, so we're gonna vote on it again.
This is a formal agreement that says we'll do it.
So how do we uh, work with them to get all the rest of their land maintained? Can we write that in somewhere that says?
Yeah, they seem to.
If if you're making us maintain.
There's a lot of Syracuse facing agreements. We're putting improvements on their land.
That's sure. But but they have land throughout the city that is being, is that is very much not being maintained. And it's causing problems.
I agree, you're you're right.
Uh, uh, and with many of them near my house. I, a lot of the residents around those slots are very unhappy.
Do they come to you?
Often.
Oh, great, good, I'm glad I'm not the only one. Because I hear it all the time and I did bring it up at staff meeting on Monday and we talked about the need for improved code enforcement. And to try and make sure that we can get on top of this, but even with code enforcement, U dot is the worst at abiding by. Uh, notifications that they need to clean things up.
Can we put a lien on a freeway? The the current, the current status.
Oh, no, I'm paying, you can just send him a bunch of bills.
Taxes.
Where, who do we bill at U dot?
The, the current status is we are in, we are in communication with U dot on the weeds. Uh, they have indicated to our code enforcement officer that uh, statutorily, they can't, that we cannot find them. And hold hold them accountable, is there, uh, we're a subdivision of the state. Uh, I think our city attorney may disagree with that, but we're waiting to.
Anyway, so long now.
So that's where that's at.
Their attorney is supposed to be calling me to tell me why I'm so stupid, so we'll see.
Send him a bill, please, they'll call, I promise.
I think it's great you guys did what you did with U dot, you're proactive, we go after it.
We we have tried, this is not, not easy. Okay. I'm gonna move us on to E because that was really more exciting than I needed it. Um, so let's go on to E, proposed agreements and contracting issues. Number one is interlocal agreement. For participation in the North Davis Metro SWAT team. This is a standard that we have to go through, uh, we just basically need to reapprove the agreement, we have all been under the agreement, it's. Oh, we've not.
It's completely new.
Long overdue, but yes, Brent.
Chief, do you wanna come to the table and tell us all about it? All right.
I'll take it if you want, so. I was gonna let you, but I'm happy to do it. So, um. Essentially, we've been part of the North Davis Metro SWAT team um, for many years. Uh, we don't, we don't have the ability to have our own team, uh, so this helps us pool resources together with uh. Agencies that are close to us. And if we weren't part of this, we would not have SWAT service in those times when. You know, when you need it, you need it, that's all there is to it, we wouldn't have SWAT service with it. Uh, previous to this, there has not been an interlocal agreement, basically what would happen is we would put our person on the team if we had one. Uh, we would, we would be responsible for all their equipment, all their training, uh, all the costs associated with that. And uh. Well, basically what this is doing is now making it so that it's all gonna fall under one umbrella, so. When we pay, what we're being assessed right now is a cost because we don't have a a member on the team. Uh, the the person who was interested got injured, wasn't able to test this year, I suspect that next year he'll test. And likely that will come down, if not next year, the year after the amount, so the amount drops, the amount you get assessed drops if you put people on the team. Uh, but yet long overdue to be able to formalize this. Um, and again, this is, this is really pretty small money when you look at it through the eyes of insurance. And that's essentially what we're paying for this.
Any questions for the chief?
Is there any reason why we prioritize this over say something like, um, the dare program?
Yeah, because dare program is preventative and SWAT takes care of the bad guys who are at your door.
Okay.
Two totally different things, but one's more relevant than the other.
If if it helps, I mean, I I understand the gist of your question, what I would say is they're really not, this really isn't.
I know, these are two separate things.
Yeah, I mean, in all honesty, that I think the way, the best way you can look at the SWAT team is insurance. This is, this is, when you need it, you need it and you need people who are well trained. Um, well equipped, uh, who can limit the damage and can address. You know, these situations that are just beyond what a patrol level response can deal with and and that's, that's what this breaks down to.
Precision cost money.
It's one of those we hope we never actually need.
That's, that's why I related to insurance, that's what.
Yep, we we could, yeah, all right. So I'm gonna, that'll go on next agenda, thank you, Chief. The next is proposed award of municipal electrical work contract to VK Electric, why is this on a, this? Go ahead.
You asked me to bring it to work.
Oh, that's right, I, never mind.
We could have just brought to business meeting, but we'll go over it here while we got it. Every, um, so we we have a an electrical contract. That uh, started on twenty twenty, it expires in on July sixteenth. Uh, since we don't have certified electricians, um, I don't feel like we need to hire any full time. But we do need them from time to time on occasion to do work on streetlights, particularly on more like Rocky Mountain power side with the point of disconnect. Um, and then on uh, and then installing the streetlights and. Then also this covers any kind of general electrical work in um, city properties, particularly in buildings. It's, it's, it's more like if it's, it it requires more like a certified electrician to do the work, so. It's it's not like a full time employee type person we would use, but just uh, as needed. So this um, would be just doing a. Uh, new contract with electric, uh, electrician, so VK.
People are hiring employees that we wouldn't use full time.
Is it basically like keep on returning?
Yeah, reference an addendum for cost, but I didn't see the addendum. Um, I didn't see pricing.
I may have missed that from going in the packet, but that can go in the, in the general, in the next.
How does that break, or do we agree to like an hourly rate?
Yeah, it's hourly rate.
It's broken down by hours and by materials, so for this level of journeyman, it's this many dollars per hour. And then materials, this streetlight costs this much, this switch costs this much, it's got both of them in it.
So be good for that to be on there.
All right, we mentioned. Um, next item is review discussion responses for request for proposal design for Roundabout located approximately three thousand and nineteen hundred south. Uh, I announced that we put out an R F P in case there was some local contractor that can propose something for. Uh, what we've already kind of hired uh, landscape artists to design. We did not get any local proposals at all. We got uh, one that was foreign from China that didn't even have a concept, that was interesting. And we got one that was a very, very different concept and probably way overpriced, so at this point. We proposed that we continue with the contractor that we originally hired to be the designer. The challenge was is that only one artist has actually done this work and you can't really ask. Somebody else to steal someone's artwork, it's kind of intellectual property, so we did put it out in case we had somebody local. That was gonna come forward either as a fabricator or as a designer, we didn't get that. The most local we got was what we already had. So if we're good with that, we'll go forward with who we have.
Is that the blue designs? In our city, I, the splash pad turned out great, the roundabout was fantastic, so. They they've been a a good resource for us.
Is this really what it costs to design a roundabout?
Um.
Five hundred.
Construct. And construct.
Yeah, but.
Something that's bigger than this room, I mean, we're, we're also doing something that's monumental.
Build a house for five hundred thousand.
You're right. You're right, but. Uh, I I would consider, this is one of those opportunities where we're not going to pay for this with. Our dollars that are set aside for anything else, we set aside money in the P I D format. Because that comes from dollars that have yet to be collected and would only be collected. If we provide something like this to attract the future business. So the Farmington did this and that's where they got the big horses in their roundabout, very similar process. Um, it's taking advantage of a funding mechanism to develop a place making something. We could never afford this, uh, we would, and I would never vote for something like this. But it will put us on the map and across the entire state. So it's kind of taking advantage of money that will be coming in the future.
I said it would be a focus style.
So are we okay with this or?
I mean, I thought the Blue Lion concept was.
I think it's the best.
The best one.
Yeah.
I love the Buffalo jet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It it's really coming along well and the, like I said, the other one was kind of like a.
I did find it interesting, they're going to quarry rock from Antelope Island, how does that work?
Uh, so, uh, really good question and I'm glad you brought it up, here's what's happening. As they're building the new IMAX theater out there, they're moving a bunch of rock and they said, if you need rock. You can come get it, they'll even load it for us, so we're taking rock that they have to get rid of. To build the new visitor center.
So we're all saving money.
We're all saving money.
Good plan.
Love it.
And they're paying for a lot of the, we just have to get it, haul it, which we don't actually have a vehicle, so that's gonna be an expense, but. Other than that, we're getting free rock. And it can be a big expense. Yeah, I I think that's part of the decision is we can get a lot of.
Rock on.
We could, I I think we could probably get some of this rock and put it over by our uh.
We can do a lot of things with it.
Is it, are they doing the golden ratio on on our Buffalo player?
It's the spiral jetty.
It's it's the spiral jetty.
That it's a nod to the spiral jetty is why.
But the spiral jetty could be in the golden.
They'll have to educate the elementary school kids on the, on the.
I mean, our week is to talk about golden ratio and really educate them.
Okay, but that's, that was what the nod was for, was the, the artwork that's in the Great Salt Lake. Okay, so moving on. Proposed amendments to Syracuse City fee schedule pertaining to noise ordinance violation and park and trail violation fees. Steve, tell us about how we've got to change our fees.
This is a continued discussion from last time, we we have these ordinances. Uh, I I've referenced in here. The code that talks about violations, we just need to set them. Um, we haven't had a whole lot of information from other cities on what they charge. So there's a couple of things we could, we could, we could charge a hundred dollar fee like we have as a non-compliance fee, it's currently in our fee schedule. Uh, we could set like a. You know, first, first actions, a warning, like a, like a escalated fee uh, schedule as well. It's entirely up to the council on what you wanna do, and there's two, two new fees we need to. I don't know if I knew, but there's two fees we need to set a fee. Have haven't been called out in our fee schedule.
Is it too hard to track an escalation fee if they, if we've issued a violation or do you have systems to track that that are pretty?
Pretty easy.
Because of our ticket system that we use now to track things. But I think that escalating fees is essential because you will get people. That will make mistakes early on and you want to be able to be lenient enough that they can learn from those mistakes. But you also will have people who, and we've learned this from other issues in the city, who will just say, I don't care, I can pay the fee. Uh, particularly watering, you know, is people who say, I, I was paying fines.
We go for a fee.
So, so at that point, if you don't escalate the fees, they don't pay attention, they just violate your process.
Yeah, I would be in favor of the escalating schedule. I don't know what that is exactly, but.
So where do you start so that people can learn from a mistake and not be penalized to the point where you lose his house?
Is the hundred bucks the starting point?
I can tell you that the low end of traffic violations these days is a hundred and thirty bucks and it's been there for several years. In fact, I tried to get the state to raise it to one fifty. But they've decided not to do that, so I would say the hundred, hundred and twenty, five, hundred and thirty dollar range is probably good for a first offense.
What's a, what's a child's secret strength?
Forty five bucks.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, so we good with a hundred, hundred and twenty five?
That's fine, I just go a hundred.
Okay, and then I think the escalator has to be steeper because when you know the law and you're continuing to willfully disobey it. We need to motivate people to try and obey the law.
Each time is a one point five increase. One hundred and then. You do a hundred and fifty percent, so that would be like two fifty and then.
Five hundred.
Sure, then it gets, I don't know, actually. But but I mean, I'm okay doing like one hundred and then, I don't know if you wanna do two hundred, then four hundred, if you wanna do it that way, or.
Uh I'm okay if you go one hundred to five hundred, because the first time is a mistake. Like I say, the second time is willful disobedience, that's.
Well, and and sometimes there, like there's that one guy who who with his water offenses, for example. He was out of town for three weeks and he got penalized three times in that time.
One of the people, there were three people that came in front of us, one of them had that problem.
Agree.
But there was the other guy who just said, hey, I don't pay attention, that guy.
Is the one that we're talking about.
Yeah. That guy didn't deserve any mercy at that point because he was just, hey, I don't care.
So if you violate it. And so if we do like a one hundred, two fifty, five hundred.
Yeah.
Then once you read that. Five hundred, then each subsequent one remains at max five hundred.
Or.
So if it goes one, two fifty, if you're doing, it would actually, the next one would be what, seven fifty?
Well, five hundred.
Five hundred is a max?
I think it just keeps doubling after that.
Some point there, each each bill is like ten thousand dollars. Where, where, by statute, we're, we're out. How like we go, we probably can't have it, there is a cap on the park, trail violations in our code of five hundred.
I I think that's okay in that one, I'm, I'm more thinking about willful disobedience for things like noise ordinance. If you make a mistake, okay, fix it. You make a mistake again, okay, it's a little bit more painful, but fix it, but if you've got somebody who says. I'm just gonna pay these, and I'm gonna throw a party after party after party.
I personally would set a max at a thousand dollars for like fourth or fifth or tenth or fifteenth defense. You start doubling them all the time, mayor, and you get up to thirty-five thousand dollars for.
I think you gotta have some sort of a cap.
At that point, the board would probably throw it out.
Go one hundred, two fifty, five hundred, seven fifty, and then a thousand.
We've got bigger problems.
I like that.
That seems reasonable.
And then we just.
Yeah. Sad when we have to get to a point where we've gotta penalize people to be respectful of the people that live around them, but I'm for it.
Okay, so are we settled on that? Not enough direction, Steve?
So for noise one.
Sounds like.
Are we really thinking people are getting the fourth and fifth offense? I really hope.
Well, you can just do five hundred straight to a thousand if you want.
Okay, all right.
We had to squeeze in the nice.
You do have a cap on this other one in code of five hundred for uh. You wanted to escalate as well a little.
I feel like that'll be more kids getting those, so probably not, parents can't afford that, I guess.
Maybe started a hundred, go up by a hundred?
Yeah.
To the max?
Yeah.
So there are escalators, but. Okay, anything else? All right, that'll be on a future vote as well. Okay, our next item is item G, discussion of surplus property.
Two quick items, we talked about the stage already in our retreat. Um wanna make sure we're all clear, putting on on a surplus with the council on a formal vote next meeting.
On which one? No, I don't care what the stage.
No, the stage, yeah, so our plan is that we've ran a stage for Heritage Days going forward.
Too expensive to maintain.
Yeah, that's good. Uh the other one is the, is the ginger. What's that?
Are you selling it to recoup anything?
Yeah, we'll, we'll surplus it, our, our policy is, we'll try to get market value out of it.
Oh, yes.
And the gingerbread figures, which were donated to us to begin with. Um.
Are you guys having the training soon?
I I'm all good to, to, yeah, well, I mean, I wish we could keep them, but you know what, we're up again.
Yeah, I looked at them last year, and no, you don't, I promise. You don't, I, if you hadn't looked at it, you wouldn't wish we were.
I kind of, well, I was.
I I I love the concept of them because they did get a lot of.
Yeah.
Photo ops in our community, maybe not for the reasons we would like. But needless to say, they were awesome and you know, I. I appreciate it.
Why is the poop joke always funny?
I I still, I'm still fourteen.
Clearly.
Clearly, uh. But at the same time, we don't do anything, this was the, our one big thing we did that was, I mean, one thing we did, and so. I'm just sad to lose that.
Well, you could put them up this year, you could do it.
How about we just give them to him, he's in charge.
But buy it for one dollar.
I, we, we legally have to put them up for auction, so.
Well, somebody in Syracuse will buy them and it'll.
If the cost of materials wasn't so high, we'd, we could replace them.
You could mow down that UDOT property by your house. I'll talk then.
All right, we are getting to the point. I'm going to move that we adjourn.
We don't need that, though.
No, but.